Okay, well, everybody, now that we're all here and Marco's on, the first thing is we're going to call it order and proceed to do a roll call. And for everybody who's online or who's listening, this is Planning Commissioner Chair Kirby Wells. I'd like to make clear for the record of this meeting, and it should be reflected in minutes, that the Planning Commission meeting of October 1st, 2020, will be conducted pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N 2920. The meeting will be held via teleconference, and the Planning Commission members will participate also via teleconference. These locations are not listed in the agenda and are not acceptable, not accessible to the public. The public is encouraged to listen to the City Council, or not the City Council, the Planning Commission meeting live on Woodland TV Channel 20, and also by going to the City of Woodland website If you wish to make a comment during a general public comment or on a specific agenda item, there are three ways to do that. First, members of the public are invited to leave a voicemail message at 530-661-5900. All voicemail messages received by 6:30 PM today will be played during the Planning Commission meeting as part of the recording at appropriate time. Again, that number, 530-661-5900. Second, any member of the public watching the livestream who wishes to make a comment on an item is, as it is being heard, may submit an email to the following email address prior to the public comment on that item. That email address is planningcommissionmeetings, so that's meetings with a, with an S, at cityofwoodland.org. If you email, please include the agenda item in the subject line. Third, participating via Zoom. You will find a link to the Zoom webinar meeting at the Planning Commission Agenda that is posted online. So it's embedded, there's a link embedded on that meeting agenda. The webinar ID is listed on the webpage as well. The webinar ID is 921-79, or I'm sorry, 921-7009-5836. Or you may access Zoom via phone by dialing 669-900-6833, and then putting in the webinar ID. Once again, that webinar ID is 921-7009-5836. Please note, all comments are limited to no more than three minutes. This includes voicemail messages and email comments submitted to be read into the record. The email shall be read for no more than three minutes, and this means that for a longer email, you may not be able to have the full email content read within the that three minutes. If you've submitted both a voice message and an email, we will take only one. Okay, so roll call. Commission Secretary Cindy, it would now be appropriate for you to conduct a roll call. Each member must identify themselves verbally during a roll call. Cindy?
Yes, I will be so. I would also like to note, Commission Members, that Commission Member Wong has tendered his resignation on the Commission. Anyway, to start with roll call, Commissioner Harris?
I am here.
Commissioner Holt?
Present.
Commissioner Hirst?
Present.
Vice Chair Lizaraga?
Here, present.
Commissioner Lopez?
Present.
And Chairperson Wells?
Present.
Great, so we have six members present, and we have a quorum. I'd also like to note that as far as staff attending, myself, Cindy Nora, Anna Canali, and Jay Kamura, who is thankfully helping us run all the behind the scenes and make these meetings work.
Thank you, Cindy. And, and with that, I'd like to thank Stephen Wong for his participation in the Commission, and I know he'll go on to do something with the City of Woodland and other areas where, where he can be, find a passion and assistance. So he, his, his work was, was much appreciated. He's a hardworking commissioner, we appreciate him. Okay, so now I need to verify for each of our commissioners verbally that you can hear me well. Starting with Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Holt?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Hirst?
Yes.
Thank you, Valerie. Vice Chair Lizaraga?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
Yep.
Wonderful. Does each member of the Commission have a copy of the agenda for the meeting? You can see that it's, it's also on our screen. So again, I'll go through and individually ask for each people, each individual, so that it can be verbally read into the record. Harris?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Hirst? Oh, I think he may be muted, Valerie. I saw those big, beautiful teeth, but I didn't hear any sound.
Yes.
Yeah, now I got it. Lizaraga?
Yes.
And Lopez?
I don't have a printed one, but I have the one that's on the screen.
Perfect, thanks, Fred. Cindy, have you posted the agenda at a location that is reasonably accessible to the public?
Yeah.
Wonderful, thank you. This will record that we have six Commission Members are present for this teleconference and have indicated that they're able to hear the proceedings. At this time, I'm, the other city officials introduce themselves, but Cindy, you've done that. Again, I'd also like to add in our appreciation for Jay, even at this last minute, when Marco wasn't able to pop in, we could call, he called Marco and got him squared away. So we appreciate his, his help, he's made this, this whole process work seamlessly. Now, as we go through the agenda, I would request that before speaking, you clearly identify yourself each time. For example, this is Commissioner Harris, et cetera. Let the individual speak, and please do not interrupt. I would also like to ask that to the greatest extent possible, everyone mute their phones or devices when not actively speaking, so that we don't get unnecessary background noise. I'd now like to advise all Commission Members and the Commission Secretary that any votes taken during this teleconference portion of the meeting must be taken by roll call. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Harris, and if we could all mute our, our microphones, and we'll ask Steve if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Most certainly would.
Did you get the phone? Okay, that's fine.
Okay, we ready to go? Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, at this time, I'll ask if any member of the Commission or staff wishes to make a statement or has any unique requests that don't have any bearing on tonight's items or agenda, but specific, unique things. So with that process, let's start going down the line. Steve, do you have anything that you'd like to add to our meeting?
No, I'm, I'm good to go.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Chris, Commissioner Holt?
No, sir, thank you.
Chris, thank you. Valerie, Commissioner Hirst? Nope, okay, I think you're muted there. There we go. Vice Chair Lizaraga?
Thank you, no.
Okay, Commissioner Lopez?
Nope.
Okay, Fred, thank you, and I have nothing. Subcommittee reports, Steve, do you have any comments or activities on the Cannabis Committee?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. And Chris, how about you on any of your committees or actions?
No, sir, thank you.
Steve, thank you. Okay, Cindy, any communications from the public that we need to bring before the Commission? Cindy?
The last time I looked, we did not have anything.
Okay, so the next item of business then will be approval of minutes. And so the approval of minutes from the meeting of September 17th, 2020, do I have any adjustments or corrections? And I'll start with Commissioner Harris.
I did not attend that meeting, Commissioner, and so I'm gonna not participate in the vote.
Okay. Commissioner Holt?
Uh, yes, I.
No, do you have any corrections or amendments?
No corrections, sorry, my apologies.
Commissioner Hirst?
No.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Lizaraga?
No, no corrections.
Okay, Commissioner Lopez?
Done.
Perfect. Okay, do I have a motion to accept the minutes of?
Maybe under a PC or something?
I will make that motion, Chairman Wells.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Hirst, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Holt, and we have a second by Marco.
Looks like a Chrome document.
Okay, Jay, I think we're getting some feedback from you. Okay, so I have a, so I have a motion by, by Commissioner Holt, and I have a second by?
Marco.
By Marco, okay, we have a second by Marco. So the motion is for approval. So we're gonna go down again for in favor, Steve, you will abstain, correct?
Correct.
Okay, Commissioner Holt?
I.
Okay, Commissioner Hirst?
I.
Okay. Vice Chair Lizaraga?
I.
Okay, Commissioner Lopez?
I.
Okay, and I am an I as well, so the ma, the motion passes with majority with one in, with one vote abstaining. Okay. Our next item, now Cindy, should we do the election, or do you want to do, you want to go to the, the current item?
Go to the current item and then do the election.
Okay.
Anna Canali will be the staff presenter for this item.
Okay, so we've got, the, the minutes have been approved, and now we have a public hearing on, the subject is the Chevron Gas Station Conditional Use Permit, and that is the property that is 595 Northeast Street. So Anna, I'll let you take us away on that.
Thanks, hey, I talked to Jay for just a second, I'm doing some technical support here.
Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners, Anna Canalis, Assistant Planner. The item before you this evening includes a request for a conditional use permit to allow the issuance of a Type 21 Off-Sale General License to sell alcohol at the Chevron Gas Station located at 596 Northeast Street in the City Regional Commercial Zone. A Type 20 Off-Sale Beer and Wine License is active at this location and is a pre-existing non-conforming use. The applicant has requested the issuance of a Type 21 Off-Sale General License to include the sale of distilled spirits. Aerial view of the site. We did receive public comment from one individual with regards to supplemental information and visuals and technical corrections, and these items will be addressed throughout the presentation. This is a district view of the site, the convenience market. Issuance of a Type 21 Off-Sale General Alcohol Sales License requires an applicant to satisfy both local and state requirements. The permitting agencies for the purpose of this application are the California Alcohol Beverage Control and the City of Woodland. Section 17 dash 104 dash 160D of the City of Woodland zoning code states that conditional use permits must be obtained for all establishments located outside the central business zone which sell alcohol, with the exceptions of veterans' clubs, enlisted fraternal organizations, and bona fide restaurants. This section further outlines requirements for on-sale liquor establishments, not within the central business, off-sale liquor license establishments not within the central business district zone. These requirements are outlined on page three and four of the staff report. Here you'll find an aerial map showing here by uses, the closest point of consideration is approximately 3,000 feet away. State legislation outlines criteria which can be used by the California Alcohol Beverage Control to determine an applicant's qualifications for license. Currently, state law limits the issuance of new alcohol permits in geographical regions to find us areas of undue concentration of retail alcohol. Undue concentration includes areas that have experienced high levels of crime with reporting district or by ratio, a particular number of permits permitted per census tract according to the population size. The, the California Alcoholic Beverage Control reports that active five off-sale licenses can be issued within the subject census tract. Tact number 112.06, as you see here, it outlines, the red line outlines the census tract. There are a total of seven licenses presently issued within and from the governing body. A request has not yet been made by the applicant. The City of Woodland Police Department reviewed the request for a conditional use permit for a Type 21 Off-Sale General Alcohol Sales License and recommended denial of the request in written memo to the City of Woodland Planning Department dated July 10th, 2020. The recommendation for denial was based on evidence that suggests that issuance of a Type 21 Off-Sale License would potentially add to an already existing excessive amount of calls for service at the premises and the immediate area surrounding the premises. The department expressed concern that the request would not fulfill findings for a public convenience or necessity due to the current number of active Type 21 licenses in the immediate area. On April 7th, 2020, the City of Woodland City Council adopted updates to the City interim zoning code. The significant change in the interim's ordinance is that service stations are no longer permitted on East Street. Its existing stations are allowed to remain, but new stations are not allowed. In addition, convenience markets are no longer allowed to sell hard alcohol if associated with gas stations. This concludes my presentation, I'm happy to take questions. Staff recommends denial of the project by making motion as follows. Motion one, move that Planning Commission adopt Resolution TC 20 dash 14, denying the issuance of a conditional use permit for a Type 21 Off-Sale Alcohol License located at 596 Northeast Street. A representative from the City Police Department is also here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to bring us back to the Commission, and we'll go down and ask if anyone has questions of either staff or of the Police Department at this time. So let's start with Commissioner Harris, Steve?
I have no questions on the issue.
Okay, Steve, thank you. Commissioner Holt, Chris?
Yes, I have three. And I apologize, I didn't send these over ahead of time, it was, it's been kind of a crazy week. So, thank you for showing the census tract, I did look that up, I went out and found it on the internet. But my first question, is the adjacent, do we know is the adjacent restaurant operating at this time? And if they are or are not, do they have one of the onsite liquor licenses that, that is being referred to? Does anybody know that offhand? Anna or Cindy maybe?
It's my understanding from reports in the Alcohol Beverage Commission or Control that one of the, the off-sale licenses is not located at, at that diner.
Okay, all right, because that would be right within that 500-foot line of, of regulation where you can't operate to within 500 feet, that's highlighted in, in the staff report. Also, is immediate area, and I guess, I guess the immediate area is defined by the census tract, which is kind of weird in this instance, because it's a very large census tract. Does Velocity Island fall into that immediate area? Do you know?
Well, Velocity Island is approximately 400 feet from this location.
I, I think it's further than that, but, but I, I think it may be considered in the intermediate because it's within the census tract. The problem is, and I think Bruce Jenks, bring, Jacks brings this up in his email, is it's kind of a little difficult to define what immediate area is, especially in a geographic, you know, census tract like that. My final question, and I'm sure maybe it's best pointed to Morgan Snadeker or one of you, has to do with the very, very large and alarming number of calls to the immediate area for service from the Police Department. And I guess my question there would be, are these hotels operating under emergency shelter orders for homeless people during COVID-19? Is that what's driving this high number of calls? Or is this kind of a, a problem area for the city, generally speaking?
Hi, guys, it's Morgan Snadeker, Crime Prevention Specialist of the Woodland PD. My camera is not working, it decided not to, so you just get my voice today, but I am happy to answer that question. And in regards to if one of the two hotels that are right there next to this location, one of them, yes, is being used to house people. It is the Valley Oak Hotel that is directly behind that Chevron. We started placing people within that facility towards the ends, end of March, excuse me. I don't have exact details, our Social Services Manager, Kristen Klein, would know all about that and have a lot more detail and information on that. But yes, we do, are using that for housing, but prior to that, the calls for service to that hotel and the shadow inn that are also right there were always kind of an issue, and our officers that work in Beat One, which cover that area, are very familiar with both locations, so, yes. Does that answer your?
Absolutely, yeah, and thank you very much for that. And, and knowing that it's really one of those hotels, the Valley Oaks Hotel, not, not both of them, that definitely makes, clarifies it for me, thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Chris, thank you for those questions. Commissioner Hirst, Valerie? I, you, you might be muted.
There's a bit of a delay when I unmute myself. No, Commissioner Holt covered what I was going to ask, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Lopez, Fred?
I think there's also a large encampment just off the freeway, kind of behind them. So I think that's part of the high rate of calls, so that could be problematic.
Okay. Okay. Vice Chair Lizaraga?
I'm fine.
Okay, I have, I have no questions at this time. So at this point, we'd like to open this up to a public hearing portion, so I'll formally open the public hearing. And Jay, do we have any emails or voicemails that have come in on this item?
I am checking right now. I do not see any emails or voicemails for this item.
Okay, do we have any people that are on the, the meeting that would like to, that you see that have a hand up or would like to address the, the meeting?
At this time, nobody has their hand up.
Sir, Sir Chairman, I believe the applicant does, did put his hand up on video.
Okay.
A minute to talk?
Yes, so certainly, so Jay, could you recognize Mr. Goman? And Mr. Goman, if you would, you've got three minutes, please, please welcome to the, the Planning Commission, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, sir, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk. So I see, actually gotten a report from the Police Department, and most of these calls are from nearby hotels, and those are due to the homeless shelter, those hos, what they call motels being used for homeless shelter. And these are, most of these calls are from there. And as far the station goes, we hardly, we have had this station for about three years, and we have hardly called cops regarding any issues from the store.
Okay, is, is, is that, is that it, Mr.?
Yes, and we are, as, I don't know if any of you have been in the store, it's a clean, properly ran operation here. Keep it clean, clean restrooms, we get a lot of freeway customers, and then a lot of hardworking people that stays in the hotels and they demand for hard alcohol. And that was the reason behind applying for a hard liquor license at the site. We currently have a beer and wine license in the store, and so I think it would be appropriate to issue us one here. That would be it, thank you for the new talk.
Hey, you're welcome, thank you, and we appreciate your business in Woodland, and, and, you know, I've, I've been by the store, I actually was part of this, I, I know myself, and both Commissioner Harris went out and kind of looked at the entire project and the properties involved, I think. So, yeah, we, we certainly appreciate you being part of the Woodland business community.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, do we have anyone else? Jay, that looks like maybe they would be part of the public meeting, would like to be part of the public meeting?
I do not see anybody else at this time.
Okay. I will now close the public hearing part of this meeting. And so the public hearing is now closed, I'll now bring it back to our Commission once again, and go through the list to see if there is anyone who does have any questions. Commissioner Harris?
No further, no questions at all.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Commissioner Holt?
Uh, no questions, are we making statements now, or would that come again?
Uh, let's, let's do that, we'll, we'll roll around, I mean, specifically on this, or do you want to have a statement specifically on this, do you think?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then let's go ahead and do, if you have a statement that you'd like to make, let's go ahead and do it now.
Okay, absolutely, thank you. I do, I, I want to thank the staff for bringing up that census map. I would ask maybe that we include those in future reports. Unfortunately, I mean, this census area is large, it includes, you know, Gateway Plaza down, or Gate, the Gateway Shopping Center down at 102 and 5, it's, it's really large. And I feel for Mr. Menji, for, you know, for being in such a large geographic area, it doesn't quite tell the whole story. Now, you know, while that may give me pause in denying this, certainly the report from the Police Department is very alarming, calls for service, especially to those hotels and motels. And while I know that's not really within his control, it is within our responsibility to think of the, the whole of the community and how we keep the whole of the community safe. And so because the whole of the community safe. And so because of that, I do think, and because of the additional regulations adopted by the council back in April, I do think it's probably appropriate to deny this. And I would be willing to support that move.
Okay. Chris, thank you. Vice Chair Lizaraga?
I am perfectly fine with the staff recommendations and how it's been covered.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez? Sorry, I'll come back.
I don't have questions, but I do.
I'll come back to you about trying this year, but I'll finish with Fred and I'll come back to you. So Fred, go ahead.
Yeah, it's, I'm not sure that's going to be a good idea for that location.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Hurst, I'm so sorry I missed you in that alphabet order. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I don't have questions, but I think in the future, maybe clarifying also the definition of excessive calls. I think we can clearly see that there is an issue.
Valerie, can you speak up just a little bit, please?
Sure.
There you go.
I think clarifying what we determine, what we define as excessive calls in an area will also be helpful, especially if we are looking at census tracts that are so large in the future. But yes, I think based on what we've seen, we can make a judgment call that this would not be a good idea.
Valerie, thank you. And I have no questions. And I would tend to agree with, with Commissioner Holt, with his sentiments. So with that, I'd like to see if we have a motion. Does someone have a motion to either accept or deny this request?
I would like to make the motion, but I don't have it in front of me.
It's going to be my problem too, sir. Anna, could you make the motion back up for us?
Yeah, one of the things that I can't see is the screen. And you had it on the screen because I have the TV on too, on channel twenty. You could put up the motion there, I could read it off.
Uh, let's see here.
They had, you, staff had it there a minute ago.
Yeah, Cindy, could you help us with this, please? Here we go.
Yes, I can take the screen down.
Yeah, post it, posted it.
Okay.
Was on the channel twenty a little while ago.
Yeah, it's not in our exact, it's not in our packet where it normally is after the completion.
I can make the motion. I, okay.
There we go.
Okay.
All right, it's right up there. Marco, you go ahead.
Okay, I make a motion that the planning commission adopt resolution number PC twenty dash one four, denying the issuance of a conditional use permit for a type twenty-one off sale alcohol license located at five ninety-six Northeast Street.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Lizaraga, and we have a second by Commissioner Lopez. So, so Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Holt?
Aye.
Commissioner Hurst?
Aye.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Lizaraga?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
And I, Commissioner Wells, also vote aye. So the resolution, the motion to deny has been approved unanimously. So with that, this item is, is passed as a denial for this evening. So thank you, everybody, for that. And, and also, I'd like to also thank Mr. Jacks, you know, and other members of the public, not only just for this, but for the last couple of weeks, we've seen, you know, and I think it's part of the accessibility of the Zoom format, but we've had outstanding community involvement, and we've had ideas and insights that have been brought forward to the commission that's helped make our end result a better process, I think, throughout this, this process. So I really appreciate the public's involvement in, in this activity. Okay, so moving on to our next item, we have an election. And so Cindy, I'm going to send the control of the commission back to you so you can do your election wonders.
Yes. Thank you very much. And so, yeah, this is the time of year, I think actually September was, was the appropriate time to do the election for commission and for officers. So what I would like to do is, the bylaws for the planning commission actually state that the members who are appointed could be for a two-year consecutive term. But it, we probably, it's a good idea to go through and, and if the commission wishes to take up the election again for officers, if there's any change that's recommended, or if we'd like to just keep the vote to keep the officers for another year. So.
Well, I, I, do you want input now or wait for you, Cindy? Are you done?
I'm done.
Oh, okay. Chairman Wells, I have a nomination I'd like to make.
Okay, I think you have to, you make that to Ms. Cindy, because at this moment, I'm not the official chairman.
Commissioner Harris here, and I would like to keep the chain of command the same. Kirby in the chair and Marco as vice chair under these times. And the way we meet, I think we have a nice system working. Everybody's comfortable with their role, and I don't see a need to change that.
Is, is that in a form of a motion, Cindy, that if we may?
If it is, I'll second it.
I'll third it. I'm definitely in support of Mr. Harris's proposition to continue.
I think that's fine to take a motion at this point. I mean, if we, and if it's been seconded, then we can go through and I can take.
I'll call for the question.
That motion. And so Commissioner Harris, you made the motion. Commissioner Holt?
Aye.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Hurst?
Aye. On the condition that I stop getting skipped in those roll calls.
Um, Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Lizaraga?
Am I allowed to vote? Yes, I.
You can vote for Kirby. You can't vote for yourself.
Oh, okay, okay.
No, it's a combined motion, actually, I think, is how we're handling this. And I'm sorry, Steve, I don't think I took your, since we're actually doing an actual vote. I assume it's an aye.
Aye.
And Commissioner Wells?
Aye.
All right. Well, the motion passes six oh. So we have Chairperson Wells as chair and Commissioner Lizaraga as vice chair for another year, for a second consecutive term.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So now we have, do we have any wrap-up comments? So let's go quickly through and see if there's anybody that has anything to add to our meeting that's in addition. Steve?
Um, well, I mean, the issue is over now, what we just voted on. But I, I didn't, when you had me on, it was my turn, I, I didn't know we were going to make a comment then. Chris brought that up. But a comment, one more thing that I just kind of wanted added in there that I, that concerned me was having those off ramps to five right next to the food mart. I don't understand why alcohol would be served on on and off ramps of freeways.
Yeah, that's an interesting thought.
Okay, Chris?
Yes, sir. I do have a small thing to say. I would like to congratulate and lend my full support to the leadership of the commission. I think you've done a great job keeping good order and process in this very difficult kind of environment we find ourselves in for a lot longer than we thought we would find ourselves in. So thank you for that, Kirby. I think you've done a great job running these meetings. And, and to staff as well, we've, we've really not had any major technical snafus that have, that have sidelined the meeting. So you guys have done an amazing job keeping kind of public access to the government open and running through all of this. So great job.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Let me get the, let me get the Valerie here next, because otherwise she's going to like throw her laptop.
Okay, yeah.
Valerie?
Much appreciated, but I don't have anything to say this time around.
Okay, well, you got me whipped back into shape here. Okay, Vice Chair Lizaraga?
Okay, excuse me, Valerie. I think that I really appreciate the comments that Mr. Holt has made. And I think that to the whole commission, you know, I have been in the commission for I don't know how many years. It, in my age, it's easy to forget, especially when I owe somebody money. But, you know, it has been really enjoyable for me. I've been really enjoyed working with all of the commissioners and certainly the leadership of Kirby Wells. I've enjoyed working with him and Cindy and everybody, and I really appreciate it. And I strongly, you know, agree with you, Commissioner Holt.
Thank you, Marco. Fred?
Yeah, I also echo the same sentiment that, you know, we have a very well-oiled planning commission at this time. Everything seems to work good. Everybody gets along really good. We've all enjoyed working with staff on various projects, and everything's always gone off without a hitch. I would like to see that our departed planning commissioner, if we could get the city to put a nice little letter or something for him that we could all sign, showing our appreciation for the time that he dedicated to helping us with some of the projects we had. I would, I would, myself would appreciate that for him. And, you know, the leadership that we have right now is really good, really happy with everything that's going on right now.
Fred, thank you. And yeah, for my, my little piece of this is to just thank all of you. When I talk to people that, you know, around Woodland about our planning commission, it's, it's really fun to talk with pride about the fact that we have such a broad spectrum of individuals that maybe in, you know, another political environment, we would find ourselves on different sides of the fences. But when it comes to taking care of the public interest of the City of Woodland, everybody, every individual on this commission really, you know, we consolidate to do the best for the, for the citizens. And it's just so refreshing to see a political body, you know, emboldened with, with the work and the commitment that you all bring to, to the work that you do. So thank you so very much. And it's something that, you know, reflects, I think, on staff and on our city. And, you know, we see businesses coming into Woodland because, you know, the planning commission really is an effective organization. So again, that goes to staff, but it also goes to each and every one of you. So thank you very much. Okay, with that, we have the, the big decision now is whether or not to adjourn. So do we have anybody?
I'm listening to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
I so moved to adjourn.
Marco, you make the motion. Brad seconds. And so we do need to go through and take an official vote on this because it is a via fellow conference. So Harris?
Aye.
Okay. Holt?
Aye.
Okay. Hurst?
Aye.
There we go. Vice Chair Lizaraga?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Perfect. And I'm aye. So we are officially out. The meeting is adjourned. Have a great night. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It's always good to see you guys. Thank you.